Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, June 13th. If we could have a roll call please to establish score.
Terry McLuhan?
I'm here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
And we're hoping Joyce will arrive soon. We have five.
All right, we have four. Stand, pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
I just tried calling and got this changed.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the-
I give it five minutes.
Agenda. Below.
Second.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to, regarding the people that are here, their topics, in order to not have them wait all night long, I'd like to move under new business, item number one. Do I understand that item number two is not tonight?
It's been deleted.
Okay, number two is not tonight. So I'd like to move item number one, under new business, to our first topic of business, under unfinished business, and also move under unfinished business, topic number two, up to the second item.
You mean number three, because number two's been deleted?
No, I'm talking about unfinished business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Reclaiming jurisdiction over Hickory Street from parks.
Sorry.
So I'd like to change the agenda to appeal planning commission denial. For the 23 Elk Street is number one, and number two, the jurisdiction over Hickory Street is number two. If I can get a second.
Oh, second.
All right, everybody understand what we're doing?
No. I missed it.
We're not quite done with that. Switch around though.
Well, let's deal with this first. Under new business, taking item number one.
This was gonna be number one.
This'll become number one.
Right. This'll become-
Number two, and we'll put that number three.
Oh, the White Street Fire Station will be number two?
Uh, no. The improvement district workshop summary would become number three, under unfinished business.
And Hickory Street would be-
Two, under unfinished business.
Okay. Okay. I got it.
Okay. Let's vote on that one first. It's all in favor of making that amendment to the agenda? Sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mickey?
Okay, because there are several people here for the discussion of the fire department. Could we then move that up to number three, under old business, James? I mean unfinished. Well, I mean, you claimed one and two, right?
Correct.
So if we can move that to number three, please?
I'll second that.
Um, for clarification purposes, Mickey, I would suggest you wanna reverse four and three. They're both on the fire station, but we should swap land if we're gonna sell it first, before we swap. We should swap, there's two, they're number three and four. Number four is to-
Oh, number three, under new business, needs to become number three, under unfinished. Is that what you mean?
No.
He wants to discuss the fire department.
You've got two, you've got two fire department ordinances there?
Yeah. Not the, not the White Street, not that one.
No.
The one under new business.
Well, they're both on the White Street. Number three, old unfinished business, is talking about selling the fire department.
Didn't see that one, right?
And number four is to swap the two triangles of land. You should swap before you sell.
Okay, I'm not talking about either one of them.
Okay. I'm just kidding. But that needs to be done too. I guess we just get through with where you're at.
So, number three, under new business, which is discussion of the fire department, if we could make that the third one, under unfinished business, please, and move everybody else down. After James's one and two.
Okay, all right. I heard fire department. I wasn't listening close enough, sorry.
James?
I would like to add a topic for our last item. Still got a vote on that?
I'm still needing a second on that one.
Oh, I second it.
All right. All in favor of making that change? Sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, one.
Did you object?
Yes ma'am, I did.
Okay. Bob, you said yes?
I said aye.
Okay, so we still got four. Okay. All right, that becomes item number three. All right?
I got it.
Okay. Now, James.
I would like to have a last, last item, under new business, to be a discussion of B and Bs.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that? Sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The final change in the agenda will be switching items, under unfinished business, four and five, reversing those, that order.
Actually, three.
Three and four.
Three and four.
Three and four, yeah.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Three and four. Whatever that comes up, we're switching. That one will be, four will become the four, three.
Who's on first?
Got it.
That's gonna be, yeah. Okay.
Oh my god.
Okay. I'll have the clerk help me arrange all this as we go through that. Okay. All in favor of that change? Sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other changes? Or should we just have a whole new agenda written?
Yeah.
Okay. Get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Lord willing. All right, next, on our agenda, we've got-
Minutes.
Minutes. Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any changes, corrections, deletions? All right, all those in favor of the minutes that submitted? Sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Okay, now, under our commission committee reports, under the cemetery commission, I wanted to update the council. We do have, if y'all remember, we've got four new members on the commission, including Alderman, Thomas, and I appreciate all of them volunteering. All the commissioners were trained by our longtime commissioner, Mary Ann Fennell. And I bring this to y'all's attention, because part of her plan in concluding the training of the cemetery commission was her resignation, and she submitted her resignation last week. There, we still have some, a couple of people who are still interested in serving on the commission, so we won't go without a full commission. But I just wanted to let you all know, Mary Ann had served for nine years on the commission, and she had trained the next generation, you might say, to carry on in the spirit of her service, and I certainly wanted to thank her for her service and her commitment, not only to the city, but to the cemetery. So our heartfelt thanks go to her. The next item is the auditorium committee. I think everybody has a copy of the auditorium committee report. It's one page in there. But briefly, briefly, we've been meeting, I guess, once a month since we started the committee, I wouldn't say around the beginning of the year. I may be mistaken on that. Last week, they met, you might say, for the final time, and submitted this report, kind of the final report. In essence, what they did was, after reviewing the basic, looking at the auditorium and all the different reports that had been generated, including the last report, that was 2011, they also started looking at the basic budget review in the auditorium. And as we all know, the auditorium takes approximately $70,000 from the CAPC and a little under $30,000 from the mayor's budget to operate. So we get a little bit, you know, a little bit under $100,000 is to run the auditorium. Of course, that's offset also, we get, last year, I think, the basic thing was around $34,000 in revenue on there. So-
I don't think so.
What? Yeah, I think that's the 68,000?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that $34,000 in net revenue-
Oh.
Towards, towards, it may have taken in $34,000, but it, it's not viable to that, to these needs.
It's, the $34,000 generated, yeah. It's not what it goes into, it certainly doesn't show up in the mayor's budget.
No.
I can put it that way. It probably doesn't show up in the CAPC's budget totally either. These are just figures that they came up with, that's been shown. In essence, though, the final conclusion was actually similar to what we came, the conclusion back in October in 2011, was that if the auditorium is to really be viable, it needs a steady revenue stream, and to help out everybody. Again, this just points out again, as we all know, from engineers' reports, you know, they've got, you know, anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000 in capital repairs that need to be done at some point. Not immediate, it's not in essence a falling down, but it's certainly gonna be needed at some point. In essence, what they ended up coming back with was that, I think they're supporting some sort of a dedicated revenue stream back in through there, which kind of also goes to the support of some sort of a tax that, or some other, and that's the only thing I know of, is a tax basis to give it a revenue stream. And then also establishment of an auditorium commission with a dedicated revenue stream. At that point, what they would have, they would be able to take over the operations and pull that away from the CAPC. The committee has done a pretty good job of working together, and they've come up with some good ideas for various functions in the auditorium, and what they would like to do is continue on working. And I think what they're gonna do is approach the CAPC to continue working as a committee and reporting to the, to the CAPC. But as far as our commission, and the mayor's task force on the auditorium commission, committee, we're basically completed with this report. So, kind of long and short, bringing you all up to date on, and the public, where we met. So, they'd be commended, we had, you know, six, seven people that were very diligent in looking at this and working with it. So, any comments or questions? Okay. The next item is our food truck committee. I'm not real sure how to approach this one. We, we basically met with the planning commission last week, or in the last two weeks ago, at our last council meeting, and I think pretty much gave us this same report. And this is basically where they're coming up with, basically saying that we need to come up with some sort of an ordinance based on their proposal of requiring a designated area and restricting a number of permits to be put. And I'm, again, most of this, if I'm not mistaken, unless something was changed, all of this would be up on the highway. This would not be the downtown area. Is that right?
It's one on Main and one on-
Main, yeah.
One on Main.
Oh, one on Main Street. The who?
Steve Beecham.
Is Steve here?
Yes.
Ah, there's Steve, I'm sorry. Steve, come on up. I didn't see you. I apologize. Well, come on up. You can do a better job than me. You've worked on this. I apologize.
And I don't have a copy to look at.
Either one.
I had just gone over all this with you all, and I hope everyone's had a chance to look at it. But was there any questions or clarifications? Yes?
Well, I had a call from a resident that has the log cabin in.
Yes.
And, and he would like-
Dan Rung?
Dan Rungy. And he would, he would like to have his property included, and I'm familiar with that property, and that at the back, he's, he's brought up its level, and it's a pretty good sized area, parking area. I mean, as far as the location, I mean, I can't see why it wouldn't be a possibility as well and, and put in, in one of these lists, at least, you know, where he could have an option to put in for, you know, as, as a, as a spot to get his name in the hat. He may not get drawn, but at least, like the others, I would think. I'm not sure which, which one it would go under, but, but, but the property was certainly, would be functional for it.
Where is that property, Terry?
It's on the, it's at the top of Benton Street, the log cabin.
Oh, okay.
He has a large parking lot behind the old-
Yeah.
I spoke with him, and I, I agree with location and everything. In terms of tourists, it's maybe a little off the beaten path, but in terms of locals, it's actually a pretty good location to be able to get to. I did receive word from the folks on White Street. I think they are probably not interested in being a part of this. So there could be a possibility of opening it up to some other section of town. It was just sort of suggested to us to come up with what we were calling districts, and, and I had not even considered his area.
I mean, I hadn't thought of it either till he mentioned it. But, yeah, I'm familiar with that.
I spoke with him and went and looked at his lot. I mean, I think it could at least be a one, one unit lot, so. Does that answer that, Terry?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Just a question came up, and I asked Bob earlier about it. Since we're coming up on the summer season and the fall season, would it be possible that this could, the first go around could cover 18 months, so that we, if, because if we did this, then we wouldn't do it till November, we wouldn't start until '17. Is there any way to move the lottery up and allow it to start a little, potentially a little bit earlier? Is that a negative?
I think we could do, really, whatever this, this table wants to do. I think we could do a split season, or an extended season for the first try.
For the first one?
If that meets the council's approval, it would give someone an opportunity to sort of get a fall season in, and we, I mean, this is all kind of a test drive to see, first of all, how it's gonna work, and if we're gonna be happy with it. And I'm hoping that, at some point, the whole lottery concept can actually maybe disappear too. But right now, we were just trying to come up with, our committee was trying to come up with what we consider the most fair way to do this.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Schneider?
The city parks. Isn't Basin Park a city park?
It is, but it doesn't have a parking space big enough to fit the concept that we're discussing here.
Okay, well, it just says, "The vendors who meet the stipulations set forth by Parks Department are allowed in all city parks."
I think you were maybe not here when I-
I missed a meeting.
Okay. City parks, the only three that are really within the area we're discussing are Leatherwood, Harmon Park, and Magnetic Spring. Those are the only actual city parks that have a parking spot.
Would it possibly be better to name them? Because a lot of people consider the little fountain and garden areas a city park.
I think it would, you know, this was just a concept that we brought to this table.
Right, but that's why I'm bringing it up.
I think if you would feel more comfortable having them named, that's what you should do.
I know how-
I think what we were doing, including the city parks as part of this, was that currently, under the peddler's ordinance, city parks cannot have vending trucks out at Lake Leatherwood-
Right.
-right now.
Yeah, no, it's good, I just-
Unless it, I guess, unless it's approved by the mayor's office, perhaps.
I just think it might save a little bit of grief if we name the three. Other than that, it's great.
We were just, and, and you could limit the parks, I guess, but we were just trying to, since parks is sort of an autonomous group, we felt like they should-
Maybe they should name it.
Should have the rights to control there.
Okay.
So, the next step is to draft an official ordinance, I understand, to determine this, would that be the next step?
Let me defer for a moment. I think the next step would be to have a workshop.
Well, we've had workshops. What do you, what do you see in the workshop, James?
Well, I understand, we've had workshops. We have a basic framework here, unless you want to debate it, unless you want to debate it during city council, I have-
Maybe have a separate public work, public hearing workshop?
Well, I have a number of items that I'd like to incorporate into this. This has been a recommendation from planning. It is now to the council's table, and now we participate in the decision-making process. So I assume, given the nature of council, it will be protracted.
Okay. I mean, we can have a, I mean, we can have workshop, public hearing, combination. Probably the best way to go about doing that.
You introduced this as a recommendation from planning, and he just referred to it as a recommendation from planning. This is a food truck committee recommendation. There were three people pointed by the mayor.
It's the mayor's, yeah. Assuming that we, they had gone through planning with planning's approval, I guess, I'm gonna make an assumption there.
I'm keeping planning appraised in this process as we go along. Planning's only recommendation, I believe, to council was that it take place on private property.
Don't, yeah, well, you don't, it doesn't have to go back to planning for any-
No, because if it's on private property, then it's pretty much as own commercial in three there, and so it wouldn't be anything to do. I think what James is saying is having a, some sort of a workshop, public hearing, a workshop with, that can incorporate a public hearing, and then we can process and get that recommendations, and then go in to try to formulate a, an ordinance. Okay, does that sound feasible?
Yes.
All right, James, I guess, do you want to make a motion, or we just establish a workshop, and I'll get Kim to-
Sure, I'll make that we establish a workshop slash public forum for mobile food trucks and trailer vendors.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Three, two. I'm gonna vote aye, so we'll go ahead and get a public hearing, and then go for that one on there. So, thank you. Public comments.
Hello, my name is Robert Ford. Six weeks ago, my partner, Robin Bray, and I purchased the home at 12 Washington. I'm here tonight because we would like to see that section of Washington be red curved. In the six weeks we've been here, we've seen that traffic is a lot heavier than we expected. And when I went out and measured the street, we've got a lane, the south-going lane is 11 foot, 3 inches wide. The north lane is 9 foot, 3 inches wide. When someone has parked there, a 7 foot, 8 foot wide car, you now have one lane that is 4 foot wide, and another lane that is 9 foot wide. So you effectively have a one-way street. We've got the tourist trolley that comes by. We've got large trucks that deliver to the Crescent Hotel, and it's become a real dangerous choke point. In addition, we have the fire hydrant directly across from our house. So you've got a, a spot right there where parking legally now reduces it to a one-way street. If you need to access the fire hydrant, you now have a completely blocked street. Robin and I don't have parking, so when we bought the house, we realized, you know, we can park up here, but it's gonna be a detriment to the community. So we've taken it upon ourselves to put parking behind on Dicky Street, just so we're not a part of the problem. We'd like to see that part of the street be safer, and I think red curbing would do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roderick Beatty. I'm here on behalf of Gary and Kathy at 23 Elk. I live at 17 and 1/2 Elk. I purchased my house 22 years ago. Gary and Kathy's house is 100 feet away. Gary and Kathy have been working on their house and property for a year and a half. It's a virtual train of local labor, plumbers, carpenters, painters, tylers, yard maintenance. And this property looks fabulous. 115 feet off Elk Street, they have an 18 by 20 building with a loft, 540 square feet of living space. You could not rent this monthly for even $500. My personal observation is, if a rental cannot bring 700 per month, you get riffraff and all of its attendant ills. Some time ago, Gary and Kathy applied for a permit to run a B and B, a known process that many have navigated successfully. But for Gary and Kathy, their process looks and feels like trial by ordeal. Part of this process is to send out a registered letter to property owners within 200 feet. I received my letter, and right away, I received a phone call persuading me to turn down their request, which I did. I called out the 200-foot rule. It was an easy place for me to couch my bias. Shortly afterwards, I met with Gary and Kathy, posed my concerns to them. Principle among them was, is this truly your retirement residence? Are you here to stay? Gary and Kathy have convinced me, we are now neighbors. I am here to state clearly that the residents of Elk Street have been slighted by an organized campaign designed to smear the process and stain the character of my neighbors. Their tactic is clear. What I say three times is true. In my own process of reaching out to the recipients of the registered letters, I came across the same letter to the city submitted by two separate recipients. One through Valdeboris, one through Sylvester Tapia. I have the letter. Five minutes, 10 seconds? Anyway, he was tracked down. He couldn't ignore them. They tracked him to his job to get them to sign this free written letter.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Rodeer, 20 Fairmont. Okay, planning has denied this application twice. This is on 23 Elk Street. Planning has denied this application twice based on the 200-foot rule and the fact that over 20% of the residents on the street oppose the application. Some people are still confused by this term, same and similar. These terms really are not difficult to understand. Thank you, Ken. Common sense tells you the same, in the case of lodging, would be a B and B within 200 feet of another B and B, and a similar would be a B and B within 200 feet of tourist lodging. Whether it's Airbnb, a B and B, tourist lodging, is all a form of lodging. It is either same or similar when it comes to the 200-foot rule. My understanding is that if a zoning variance was submitted for this and denied, the appeal process would have to be filed in court, not brought to city council. So all this talk of poisoning outsiders, witches, is it just a distraction? So all this talk of poisoning outsiders, witches, is it just a distraction because of the application process was done incorrectly on the vice from City Hall in the push to get this cup through in any way possible? Are you going to violate the 200-foot rule, and over 20% of the residents opposing this permit based on sympathy and appeasement for the applicants because of a possible threatened lawsuit? At what point are you going to follow the rules you have set in place to stop the encroachment of commercialization in our quiet residential neighborhoods? How do you expect the residents of this town to follow the laws that you have set forth, if yet you ignore them when it's convenient? Please take the time and the consideration to do what is best for the majority, not the few, and deny this cup as it violates the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Lee Wilcox, and my property is at 310 Springs Street. I am speaking again on the opposition to the cup application for 23 Elk, and I was going to speak about Kirk Street, but I've been informed it's been pulled. First of all, I want to say, if there was any wrong information communicated to the applicants for the Elk Street from the city employees, I think this is an opportunity for a solution, so that this won't happen again. The 200-foot rule is a violation of code on the Elk Street application, and there is a city street separating the properties being rented currently without a license on Kirk Street, which is a violation. I do applaud Steve Beecham for his professional handling of this difficult situation. People have called me and stopped me when I would be out to thank me for what I was doing by speaking against these applications. Most of these people went on to say they had given up because of Eureka politics, but I have not. I have faith in you as city council members, that you will vote to enforce our rules and laws put into code, and please uphold the planning commission's ruling, which they have made twice now on the Elk Street property, and vote against these applications. Allow our city government to function as it has been designed to do, and keep in mind the concerns of the percentage of neighbors who still don't want these businesses in their neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
It's a crowded room. Hi, everyone, my name is John Rankin, and I'd like to speak to the, let me just read my prepared statement, and you'll get it. We don't live in a faux-Victorian town, a big part of its charm to our repeat visitors is that Eureka Springs is a living, breathing entity with a vibrant community that actually inhabits the city. My husband and I came to Eureka Springs more than 20 years ago, and have invested heavily, both financially and emotionally, in this tiny quirky, loving little place we call home. We own the commercial space at Two Pine Street where Brew's and several other businesses operate, and have several rental properties in residential neighborhoods, including the fourplex at One Washington Street. Over time, we have worked and renovated these properties, providing affordable housing to many residents struggling to survive, the people that are cleaning your toilets, reciting the daily specials, and serving you your drinks. During the last council meeting, plans to draw up an ordinance to remove the parking and red-strike the curb across the street from our Washington Street tenants was approved, apparently in part because of unanimous agreement of its residential neighbors. How strange that neither I, Bill King, nor any of the people living at One Washington Street, the people most impacted by this decision, were ever contacted about this proposal. I was also surprised, there was zero discussion on the impact eliminating parking would have, not just on our tenants, but also residents of Vaughn Street. It's the only alternative place for our tenants to park is on Vaughn Street, which is already maxed out. If this is indeed a safety issue, then let's address safety throughout town, and not just cherry pick one area or one curb, or suddenly change what was historically been residential parking. The residents, their visiting friends and families, need a place to park. Please, let's not make it more difficult for the residents living in our historic residential neighborhoods where parking is always a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Pat Matsukas, 5 Mountain Street, 35-year resident. I have several notes on several things in planning. Where is our master plan? In the first two pages of the planning commission, it tells us exactly what we should be doing and how to do it. We're not doing it, we're piecemealing again, because people come to us with needs, we're responding to the needs rather than our master plan. This is not a good thing for us to do. We are sacrificing and devaluing commercial property with every new CUP. It's not enough if someone is really nice. We keep trading residential property for pretty B and Bs that are taking away from the commercially licensed sectors. Most folks choose residential because they crave the family experience, the pleasures that lengthen one's life by knowing your neighbors, not the steady intrusion of strangers in a town that is already devoted to tourism. You, as a council, must not uphold not only the planning commission, but the legality of these people being licensed. Parking, in order to be fair and equitable to every street in town, shouldn't the fire trucks make a run all over to see what streets need to be reworked? And if there are traffic problems, then isn't it time to do away at the trolleys in the same vein of public safety? If we are going to demand correctiveness from one street, why not all? Why is there selectiveness? Think Center Street, think Montgomery Street. Why not make the firehouse that you want to sell a multi-story parking garage? Finance, since admitting the city is broke, by the way, how much to maintain the new alarm system, it is noticed by many that most of you at this table have been sitting here for the last 10 years, and yet you just noticed how broke we are. Burning, in my historic downtown neighborhood, the burning of bamboo is a regular occurrence. When this problem was brought before you several years ago, you, the council, meaning many of you here, did nothing about the problem of bamboo and ivy. Please make a motion to direct the mayor to direct Public Works to build and license a fire pit, so that we can resolve this in a safe way and not have a fire downtown that could take out the Palace, Chelseas, and the bigger historic places, not so much my house. I still haven't seen an equitable handbook for the employees, and Fayetteville passed a native plant ordinance, and we should be doing the same thing to get rid of non, to get rid of the invasive plants that are not native to our area. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Sarah Knight, and I live at One Washington Street. I do recognize some of the faces here, you know, I've been a resident of the town for many years, not as long as some, of course, 15 or 16 years at this point. I have a problem with the red zone. Actually, I was kind of amused by what somebody said about the riffraff, if you heard that comment a few minutes ago, because that makes me in the riffraff, because I'm just a little bit under that income limit, or the, what I pay for my apartment. I thought that was very amusing, because I'd never really have considered myself riffraff. I know, maybe some of the rest of you have, but I haven't. I am handicapped, unfortunately, I do have leukemia, it's going to continue to get worse, it is terminal, I don't know how long I'll be around. I know that I was told I'd be around six to 12 months, 18 months ago. I think maybe they were wrong, for which I'm quite grateful, but I could live another 10 years, I don't know. The problem I have is, if you take away the red zone, or if you put red zone parking along there, then it's going to make it really difficult for me to get to my door. And I can't walk very far, I can't do steps, there are a lot of things I can do, but those are not really among them, and consequently, I would really appreciate it if you would consider leaving a place for those of us who need to park there, so that we could. Was it convoluted, did you know what I meant? I don't want that to be red zone parking, because it'll make it really impossible for me, and for my husband, by the way, who was around someplace, but he ends up carrying my wheelchair, my rollator, my oxygen, whatever it is, and he has to make several trips, as it is, back and forth to the vehicle, so it makes it just that much more difficult for him, and I try to be sensitive to that. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay.
Okay, great, please, consider seriously.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill King, I am the owner of a four-apartment house at One Washington Street. We are grandfathered in, it's been an apartment house for at least 40 years that we've documented, probably longer than that. It has one off-street parking place, the residents of my apartment house, which is affordable housing, as my tenant just let you know, I guess the riffraff live there, although I have some very nice people living there, they all pay under $700 a month. They need that parking, there's no other place for them to go. I've submitted you all some comments in writing, I hope you've received them and read them and absorbed them. I have been speaking with the fire department, chief of police, building inspector, and I'm hoping that when this comes up during your discussion, that you will allow me to interject some of the information that I have at that time as the subject comes up. The parking is desperately needed. As far as traffic on that street, you know, it's always been, there's always been parking there, there's always been trams, there's always been trucks, the only thing that's changed is that now there's a business, a new business going in in our residential neighborhood, and they don't want parking in front of their building. And, you know, that's not fair to the residents, we're already, they've gotten a variance, they've gotten a CUP, how much more are we going to give them? We're going to give them, you know, we have to do something for the residents in this town, and this is really a sad state if we take away the parking for these people that need it. They're, they need a place to go, and there's no other place. Thank you very much, and I hope you will consider letting me speak when you take the subject up later in the meeting. Thank you.
Are we, is the sheet empty? We're done then?
Okay. All right, well, that concludes the public comments section of our, our meeting. Our next order of business, according to our revised agenda, is the appeal of the planning commission denial and conditional use permits for one unit bed and breakfast from Kathy Martone and Gary Tob, 23 Elk Street. I believe you guys, can I get a motion to discuss?
Second.
All right. I believe you all have a copy of the application for appeal on your permits.
Should some of yours be higher?
Okay, got it? Yeah, at the first planning commission meeting, the commissioners, well, this is what they stated in their reason for their appeal. At the last meeting, we basically decided to, because there was some, seemed to be some confusion, and maybe not all the information was, we felt was heard, we asked the planning commission to go back and rehear that again. So Gary, you want to come up and give us your summary of the planning commission?
Hi, Steve Beecham, planning commission.
I'm Steve, I'm sorry.
I'll answer it all. We were asked the council to review any new information that the Martone Tobes wanted to present to us, as well as review the old information that had been presented to us. Part of the confusion, I think, was in the original denial of the application, we had said it was denied due to public comments at the meeting, and the public comments at the meeting contained a myriad of subjects. So in the review, we basically broke down the comments into all the categories, there was several of the property owners recanted their opposition to the Martone Tobe CUP, but there was still more than 20% of the 200-foot folks that were in opposition to it. The other thing was the 200-foot rule, and we have discussed that, and discussed the word similar, which is part of what the point was in this description of allowing a CUP, and I've got, just, if I can just read this, if y'all don't mind, it's, "No request for a conditional use permit shall be granted if the property line of the property upon which the use will be carried out is within 200 feet in any direction of the primary fronted streets of the property line of wherein existing conditional use or legal nonconforming use offering the same or similar services is located." And shall is a mandatory term in this case, may is more permissive, and it's saying that it shall, no request shall be granted. So basically, we were just back to the 200-foot rule in this case, and there is an existing licensed tourist lodging next door to this CUP applicant's property. It's a, it's tourist lodging, but it's lodging. If you look at, I discussed this with several of the previous commissioners' chairs, and unfortunately, the person who helped write this ordinance, Mr. Lesswick, has passed away, so I really couldn't get a firsthand explanation of why the word similar was put into this code in the first place. But I know at the time it was written that B and Bs were sort of the only game in town, but I also know that part of what planning does is plan for the future, and so I can only assume that Mr. Lesswick, and including the word similar, in this code meant that he was seeing possibly in the future some other forms of lodging that would exist beyond just a CUP in a residential area.
Steve, here's my, here's my problem with it, since I've been, and I watch the planning meetings, and I think I was even there at some of them. Martone Tob comes, come to town, and they come in to get their application, and they get an application that has them apply for a CUP, not a variance. So at the very first meeting that planning had when they first came in, y'all didn't hold a zoning meeting for a variance because of similar, you went right to a CUP meeting for the license, which was denied. And it was probably denied, as I remember, on the number of people, because it was significantly over 20%, as I recall. I even recall you talking about that letter that came from outside attorney about the word similar, and at that time, you, you didn't seem to be, you are the committee, let me use the committee, I guess when I say you, I mean the committee, the commission, didn't seem to be zeroing in on similar at that, at that time. Then the Martones kind of came and applied, and council referred it back for reconsideration. Then all of a sudden, similar seems to become an issue, and I can read it here too, but my concern about that word similar is this, when Armstrong Street came for a CUP and a variance up there, the only similar was a B and B, but yet there was a tourist lodging within 200 feet, and it wasn't considered as similar. was a tourist lodging within two hundred feet, and it wasn't considered as similar. It wasn't included. When I applied for a CUP a couple of years ago to get a fourth CUP, the only similar thing I had was a B&amp;B, yet I was close to within two hundred feet of tourist lodging, which would have been Sparky's and the Texaco Bungalow. Just recently, a CUP was granted, and a variance was applied for, for eight Washington Street, and Sparky's nor the Texas Bungalow was considered to be similar, and so they weren't included. It was just my B&amp;B and Five-O Joe. So I'm having some difficulty when similar's turned on and when it's not. And, and it's concerning me that all of a sudden, it seems to be applied in this case, and I'm just not comfortable with it.
May I address that?
Yes, sir, please.
Part, part of what you discuss, I was not the chair at the time with the Armstrong issue. In terms of the way, the variance that we gave to eight Washington, in reviewing code, there's, as you all probably know, there's some vagueness and confusion in code, which we're in the process of trying to straighten out. But the waiver that we actually passed for Washington, if you read code, our code strictly, we really shouldn't have even had to vote on a waiver for eight Washington, because the wording of code is the primary frontage streets, and those streets all change names. You're on a different street than eight Washington Street, and so is Sparky's lodging. So basically, the two-hundred-foot rule doesn't apply in terms of a variance, of the need for a variance for the, for that particular, in terms of arguing that as, as a case.
But for my CUP, it, it, I had to, Five-O Joe Street, so that logic doesn't hold there. Because they're on a different street, if you want to say a primary frontage street, because in essence, it's, it's old sixty-two business, even though the names change. So I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not tracking as well, I think, as I should, and I think that brings up some concerns about, hopefully, planning is working very diligently on addressing some of these issues to clean some of this up for, and, and I think that's probably going to help in the future. I'm not too sure it's going to help right now with the Martones.
I do think the owner of Five-O Joe Street is on your street, though. Their home?
No, the, the business is on Five-O Joe. I'm on Five Summit.
But, but the owner's home is on your street, isn't it?
The home is, but the business is on Five-O Joe, not, and they don't, they, they weren't running their home out.
But, but the, the definition of a B&amp;B is the owner's home has to be a continu- contingent, continuous part of the property.
And it is contiguous.
So it's basically one, I mean, I, I realize what you're saying, but I'm also saying that it's not, you know, it's, it's confusing, and part of the confusing part of this waiver issue that you're bringing up was that I think when that ordinance was written, the upper loop was considered all one street because it was a city highway. And when the, the highway department turned it back over to the city, suddenly every fifty feet, we get a different named street. But that's not the case in the Elk Street property. And in terms of the discussion that went on that night, when, before the vote was taken, after hearing from the public comments, there was not a lot of discussion with, with the commission before a vote was taken. So the word similar didn't really come up at that point. However, at the meeting that we just recently had, commissioners that voted against this referred back to the reason they voted against it in the first time, which was the two-hundred-foot rule and the word similar.
But if you didn't, if you didn't apply similar the, the first time, then tourist lodging next door to a B&amp;B, it wouldn't be similar. It would have had to have been a B&amp;B.
It would actually be like, which is another word in the code.
Okay.
Mickey?
Having been a planning commissioner more times than I care to remember, I know we've had these kind of problems a lot in the past. I would highly suggest that we probably have a workshop between planning and council in regards to, let's get this whole tourist agenda straightened out in regards to lodging, come up with one name, you know, whatever. But in the meantime, similar, in this case, is not the same. Just because an out-of-towner stays at one place and stays at the other does not make it similar. The only thing that is similar is they sleep there. People in our homes sleep there. If you get drunk at a bar and fall asleep, you're sleeping there. See, there is no similar. That's what I'm saying. At the very first meeting, they were never asked for about, in regards to a variance. Now they're being said, you have to have a variance and yada yada and all this other stuff. With everything that has gone on for the last month plus in regards to this property, and we're talking not only the owners of this property, but we're talking our commissioners, people in the neighborhood, people in the surrounding area. There has been a lot of very rude happenings. People are being verbally attacked. They are being called names. They are being harassed. They are having young children sent after them with bogus little doodads. This is not Eureka. I spoke at the planning commission on this, and it's only gotten more involved and worse. This crap stops now. This is not Eureka. We are not here discussing this case so we can have one, two, or three people decide that their way or no way. What I would highly suggest is, since we have so much confusion in regards to our various tourist lodgings, and we have three, four, five different kinds listed.
Mickey, I think James is going to address that.
I'm, I'm not going into, I'm just stating. So we have that many. We need to get that together, but in the meantime, it is not fair to ask these people to wait until we get it straightened out. We know how Eureka works. It could take us a year. It could take us a week. It could take us a year. It's not fair to them. They have done what they were told to do. They were not told to get a variance. There is no similar B&amp;B. Nobody has the right to sit there and say, well, I don't even live on that street, but I don't want you to do it. That's not right. B&amp;Bs are fine. They are not causing any problem. They have met all requirements. I would like to see this ended tonight and now, and then take it from there.
I would just like to, Mr. Leswick cannot be here, but he actually wrote memos to the planning commission regarding these, and first of all, he suggested this paragraph on the two-hundred-foot rule. A week later, he was the one who wrote that tourist lodging should not be allowed in R1 district. So there was tourist lodging back, you know, you said that tourist lodging did not exist then. Also, when he, when he proposed this, the two-hundred-foot rule with same or similar, he attached the list of the local ordinances in other towns that they had looked at, and they all spoke only to B&amp;Bs. There was nothing that spoke to, B&amp;Bs, and there were two, two sexually oriented businesses, but, you know, nothing in regards to tourist lodging. So I, I, you know, I think his intent was not to, he's, in his, when he asked that tourist lodging be removed from R1 districts, he said it was very important to have, you know, homeowners present. So obviously, he saw a difference between tourist lodging and B&amp;Bs, where homeowners, you know, are present. But I'm, I, I really would like to understand why you changed between the two meetings. That's what I don't understand. Because in your first meeting, you went through the fact, you were very specific about B&amp;Bs being different from tourist lodging. You know, you cited the meals and the on-site manager and the parking, off-street parking, you know, and then before they took their vote at the first meeting, you made a comment, I can't quote it exactly, but you said, "Historically, the commission has always voted on B&amp;Bs as a separate entity from tourist lodging." That was kind of the direction you gave to your commission. And then at the second meeting, you said that, you know, you, you read in the legal definitions, and you talked about they, they are similar. So what, how could it be one way, one, one meeting and a month later, the opposite way?
Well, one of the things that I do as the chair is, when we're discussing an issue, I try to bring some history of what the neighborhood is like. I discuss that. I think that was part of that original discussion. And I also sort of play devil's advocate in terms of trying to give, I felt like the Martones stood up and spoke about what nice people they were, but I felt like they didn't quite address some of the issues that might have swayed the commission in terms of some of the facts that, that had been, or not facts, but some of the issues that had been mentioned to me. And that was that, I think I talked with the mayor about when the, this, this code was written, that it was basically for B&amp;Bs and has historically been looked at as for B&amp;Bs. But I still, my, my problem with the whole thing was the word similar. And the more I thought about it, the more I became really determined that similar means lodging is lodging, and that part of this whole concept is to protect our residential neighborhoods and for us to continue commercialization of neighborhoods. And I will say, in this neighborhood, the complaints by the neighbors were already against the existing commercial business that was there, the tourist lodging that's right next door to the Martones. There were complaints about parking, complaints about noise, various things. So to some extent, we're basically saying, well, let's, let's correct that by putting two commercial things in an otherwise tight residential neighborhood. And part of my, I mean, honestly, part of my whole reason to be on this commission is because I really feel like I'm concerned about the fact Eureka Springs is losing population. I'm concerned about the fact that our residential neighborhoods are becoming more commercialized, especially some of our really tight residential neighborhoods. And I'm not trying to bully my commission into making decisions, but I do try to present both sides of an issue so that they can make an informed decision.
Gary?
Well, Mr. Leswick's not here, of course, and I'm certainly not capable of performing a seance to, to bring his opinion to the table tonight. But I did sit on planning commission with Ed for a number of years, and, and have been involved with him as a councilman over a long period of time, too, and, and also as, as a realtor, involved in transfers of property. And when I was on the planning commission with Ed, and as a city councilman before, I was always an advocate of the business side of it. And, and they were, you know, people came in and, and bought the homes, and whether it was tourist lodging or bed and breakfast, and redid them, and, and the properties were improved greatly, and, you know, values went up. So I was a real advocate for that, but I lost out. And, and the laws were designed, and like you say, similar was always treated as similar because there were many contested properties that came up for bed and breakfast, CUPs and all, that, and, and for tourist lodging, and that's why tourist lodging was kept there out. And, and the, and the B&amp;Bs, the tourist lodging, that, that you're right, the similar was treated that way. A tourist lodging was similar. I remember that. There is a difference now today, though, that, that everything was done to, to, to pretty much stop that kind of logic. But it has resurfaced, where it's, people have tried to come in and do things, you know, and, and, and the back door, so to speak, and do things on the weekly basis and, you know, just to, you know, to buck the system, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't appreciate any of that. It's just, you know, operating without a license is not the way you do it. You know, you have respect for the system, and you try and follow that. So now, if, if the trend is to reverse that and go back to giving out permits, I don't care. If that's what the town wants, I'm, I'm okay with it. Because it, you know, and their home is beautiful, and their cottage is beautiful. I'm just personally, you know, I can't consciously vote for it because, because I fought it so long and hard, and, and things, and, and I didn't win that fight, and, and the trend was this way, that, you know, I'm, until I see something different. And of course, now, I'm not really in favor for other things that you've approved, or, you know, so, but that's just the way it is. So that's, that's all on that matter.
Well, I just would like to say, when we're discussing 23 Elk, I don't like interjecting illegal renting or, you know, renting and violation of the laws, because that's never been connected to these people.
I didn't, I, if I inferred that, I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't intend that at all.
I just wanted to be sure it was separate.
No, no.
But.
Go ahead. Were you finished?
No, keep going, Bob.
I, I understand going out and doing the research, and I understand your feelings about what you want now, to protect neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But when you pass a law that changes things, you grandfather people in. You know, you don't go back and burn down B&amp;Bs or whatever. These people were in process when you changed your mind on this issue. I, I think that's really kind of unfair, and I, I relate personally to that because I built houses in town five years ago, relying very much on MJ Sale and Bobby Race input as to what I could do and what I couldn't. You know, I would have, if I had ended up not getting a certificate of occupancy because I did something they told me to do, but then, you know, then they decided, well, that really wasn't right. I just see those, that kind of action as being totally unfair. And also, just, again, this is just personal, when, when the discussion of, after you had explained that the two-hundred-foot rule did apply, you and, and Ms. Harmon kind of got into discussion of, you know, how they should have applied for a waiver, and it's their fault they didn't check that little box. They didn't check it because they were told by your city representative that they didn't have to check it. I mean, I didn't like the way the tone just changed to blaming them for failing to do something that they had been told by the person that, that you've come to to ask, how do I do this, that they had been told they didn't need to do that.
May, may I address that? I, I, I'm sorry if it felt like we were being judgmental or changing the tone. I think, I think what I was trying to do as chair was say that our discussion at that table had nothing to do with a variance. And I think I mentioned that more than once at the table, and I believe the Martone Tobes' lawyer tried to interject the variance in the conversation as well. In terms of what we dealt with as a commission, we had two applicants that came to our table asking for a CUP. They did not come to me personally and ask how to fill out the application. They did not come to any member of my commission and ask how to fill out the application. I will say, in terms of a variance, we have turned down a variance for a CUP that, so it's not, you know, it's not like a, a variance is a guaranteed way to get a CUP.
Oh, I agree. I just, I just felt that.
And, and I've explained that I think part of this process of council sending the issue back to our table, had we reheard the issue as opposed to reviewing it and sending our recommendation back to council, had we reheard it, we probably would have put the variance back on the table and voted on that in the first place, which is what should have probably happened in the very first place, because from our point of view at this point, there should have been a variance.
But at your first meeting, you did, you would have said they didn't need a variance. You said the two-hundred-foot rule didn't apply at your first meeting.
At, I said the two-hundred-foot rule did not apply.
You said, "Historically, the commission has always voted on B&amp;Bs as a separate entity from..." entity from tourist lodging."
I said, "I did..."that was actually part of what I was just referring to you. When I give a description of the history of property to the neighbor...to the commission, part of it is just discussing how these things are dealt with. And historically, this issue, I was told after some discussion with our assistant at City Hall, that historically, this was looked at as a B&B was seen only in combination with another B&B. And I...part of being on this commission is that we deal with words, and I was on the Parks Commission for over six years, and, you know, I dealt with things with my hands. I could understand that. But when you're asking me to deal with words, I look at the words carefully, and just because something was historically done that way, that's sort of like a wink, wink, nod, nod to me. And it's not really...it's not really what the code says. And in reading the code, if you want to change the code, fine. You know, if you want to take the word "similar" out, if you want to make it a stronger statement or pull it completely, that's fine. But we had to deal with the code as it was and the words as they are, and that's what we did. I'm sorry that it's come to this. I'm sorry that I feel really bad for the applicants. I mean, they're nice people, but, you know, my decision was not based on somebody being nice. And believe me, I've had as many people, Ms. Schneider yelling at me about this issue as other people have. But I just feel like that we made a decision based on the actual wording of city code. If council chooses to ignore that, that's council's choice.
I just...I don't want to beat the dead horse, but you had public comments, and then you actually...at the first meeting, you had public comments, and then you actually opened the discussion by delineating the reasons that B&Bs and tourist lodging are looked at as separate in city code. And you specified that B&Bs require off-street parking, onsite management, and meals. And that wasn't like a devil's advocate. That was basically, you were telling the commission that they are...B&Bs and tourist lodging are separate in city code. And then at the end, you kind of, when it came time to vote, from my perception, you went back and reiterated that standing. And that's all I can say.
Well, it was partly because there was no discussion happening at the table. I was basically speaking by myself, if you saw the meeting. And I think it was because the commission had basically made a determination on how they were going to vote. I just wanted all of the information to be on the table before a vote was taken. And it was the same way with the previous meeting, or the most recent meeting we had. I wanted the commission to understand what concerns that the neighbors had previously. I wanted the Martone Tobes to have a fair hearing. I wanted their lawyer to be able to speak with us. It was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting that we had to make this determination. And I wanted everyone to get a fair and full hearing. But I also wanted the commission to fully understand my take on what the code reads. And that's what I did. I'm not...I understand what you're saying, but I basically am saying, when I made those statements, it was as the devil's advocate. I was basically just trying to present different points of view to the commission. I was not making...in terms of reading the code, that was not the devil's advocate. That's actually reading the code. But in terms of discussing anything as a historic thing, that historically, we look at this one way or another way, I was just putting that out on the table because that's what was told to me by both the mayor and by later, not before that meeting, but by our assistant at City Hall.
David?
If I heard Alderman McClung correctly a while ago, he said back when he had the opportunity to work with Ed Leswick, they considered tourist lodging and B&Bs to be similar. Then I thought I heard Steve say that historically, B&Bs were considered similar. So, I'm...at some point with Ed Leswick, and Alderman believes he remembers that tourist lodging and B&Bs were similar, and then we get another perspective that B&Bs are similar. And we obviously have, over a period of time, treated this issue differently when people have applied. Now, we can go with that frontage stuff again and all that, but I'm not buying off on that 100% either. But really, the issue before us today is an application for a CUP for a bed and breakfast in a residential area on a street where they meet all the requirements for off-street parking, they have adequate parking spaces, they're not out there parking on the street like the tourist lodging next door is to them. We've heard all of that background...and I'll just call it background noise from neighbors and people that don't even live in the area, that have descended upon that area with an agenda. One person constantly bringing in the fact that these people also own a weekly lodging, which was very legitimate, very legally appropriate, but when it was identified and it started to develop into something, it was shut down. And it ends. When those people sell that piece of property, that's no longer weekly lodging. It's dead. It's over. It's gone. But it took quick action to close that hole. But that is not fair to use that against these people here applying for a B&B license. We've also heard from people that have come back and recanted within the 200 feet that they are concerned about the way they were misled, misinformed. But again, let's just call that background noise for the sake of it. I think this is just a huge disaster that is very unfair for citizens.
If I can interject, Bob, I commend you for finding Ed's memo because...but I think what Ed said in that memo is that they...
Can I pass these out?
Yes, that they were separate, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
And there's also a letter from, at that time, a land use attorney that we had used from the back there. So, Nikki, do you have a comment?
Yeah, probably pretty much a final comment. In regards to, in the last year alone, Number 4 Armstrong and Number 8 Washington Street, both applying without variances, and in the same situation, we will be nailed...and I have not talked with these people, we will be nailed with a discrimination lawsuit and will lose. In view of what you just said a little while ago, Steve, how you thought about this and how change and all this, we most definitely would lose because it is discrimination. You can't say yes here and no here when it's the exact same situation. And that is...that's another thing that we are not about. We are about people and happy people and caring people, and we need to get back to doing this. So, I would highly say, please, let's work on getting all these things into one explanation, if possible, or, you know, clear. But in the meantime, we have got to let bygones be bygones and do what's right. So, I make a motion that we approve this CUP, get it done, get it over with, and from there, let's go into working on whatever. How did I word it wrong?
And I'll second it.
Tim has had a question.
Yeah, I always word these things wrong.
I wanted to make a comment. If...I don't know how your votes are going to turn out or what it's going to turn out, but you've been...there's been some banter at the table about, well, that these other entities were granted or not granted, they weren't treated...it wouldn't be fair to treat them differently under the definition of this word. The law doesn't really work that way. And I'll point you to one instance that's very close to a lot of people in this town's heart. The Supreme Court, a few months ago, made it legal to join two men or two women. Prior to that, this country, many entities said you cannot. One clerk decided, "I'm going to follow the old rule." What happened to her? She ended up in jail. You don't always follow the old rule if the old rule is wrong.
But, Tim, we haven't had a rule changed.
And so...
We haven't had a rule changed.
Well, neither did the Supreme Court. They ruled on what the position of the law was.
But in this case, because it's...
They reinterpreted...
We have a motion on...
Well, we got a...Mickey, we got a motion on four. Tim was just providing you...
It'll happen.
Just if we have a...your vote shouldn't be affected here, but...
Can we move that to discussion?
Yeah, we can. Okay, we got to move...we got a motion and a second to approve the CUP. Terry?
Okay, in this memorandum from Bill Mayo and Ed Leswick, March 21st, 2001, it says down here in that...under that full paragraph in quotations, under A, that in directions of the primary reference, it says, "Use or legally non-performing use offering the same or a similar service." That's very plain to me. Same would be bed and breakfast. Similar would be lodging.
A hotel is lodging. That's similar to a B&B?
It's lodging. Lodging.
You sleep there. That's it. That is not similar.
No way.
No, that's not similar. Nowhere near similar.
Okay. David?
We're in discussion, and I disagree venomously with Alderman over here because...and I'm going back to what the attorney just said. Up to this point, B&Bs have not been treated similarly to tourist lodging. If it was, how did you ban tourist lodging and not ban B&Bs in R1? How is it that I have to live onsite and serve a meal and they don't? They are not and have not been considered similar. The way they have been interpreted has not been. So, I'm not buying off all of a sudden on similar being applied to them.
Any other questions? Comments? I would like to make note that the owners of that property is here. If y'all have any discussion or any comments, want to ask them.
Do they want to speak?
Make it short, please. Okay. Please. Please. Yeah. All right.
We know you're all getting tired of this, and we prepared a very short statement. Esteemed mayor and city council members, Kathy and I do not feel that we have had a just or fair hearing up to this point. If we had been denied after a just procedure, we would be disappointed, of course, but we would not be standing before you now. Our application was in order. All items were taken care of. It was a perfect application, we were told. We were diligent in following all the rules and operated in good faith that we were doing everything necessary for this legitimate application. Originally, we spoke to Glenna Booth, who is the mayor's representative, and I might say later, Steve Beecham specifically said that when I had questions about my process, not to talk to him, he wanted me to talk to Glenna Booth. So, that's the very person we did go to originally. We also spoke to other city officials. They told us that we would have no problem getting a cup because there are no other B&Bs within 200 feet of us, and that we did not need a variance for that same reason. At our first meeting with the Planning Commission on April 12th, the official reason given for our denial was the neighbors' opposition. One Planning Commission member at the table that night actually turned around after the vote and told us this directly. We also later received it in writing. And several times at that same meeting, Steve Beecham specifically said the 200-foot rule was not relevant in our case. Our opposition came from biased people who spread rumors and lies about us. We believe if Glenda Satterfield had not gone around to all of our neighbors harassing them, and that's what the neighbors used that word, not us, only one or two would have opposed us. Most of our neighbors have since recanted any letters of opposition and now support us. The number of opposition letters has been reduced significantly. Then, all of a sudden, at the last Planning Commission meeting on May 24th, the 200-foot rule was brought into the mix. Why would the Planning Commission say originally, "We were denied due to neighbor opposition," and then Steve Beecham does a 180-degree turn and now says the 200-foot rule is a problem? And especially since 8 Washington was allowed to get a variance as well as a cup, and we were denied both, it seems we are being held to a different standard.
Good evening. Also, at this same last meeting that Gary is referring to, Steve Beecham told us we should have gotten a variance, but then would not allow us to do so at that point. Who will answer the question, "Why did we not get a variance and 8 Washington did?" We were never afforded the opportunity to get a variance. In fact, we were told that we absolutely did not need one by the very person that Steve Beecham told us to consult with, which was Glenna Booth. Furthermore, nothing in the code indicates that we need a variance as there are no B&Bs within 200 feet of us. And also, why were, as already been mentioned, why were the two tourist lodgings within 200 feet of 8 Washington, namely Sparky's and the Texaco Bungalow, not ever mentioned during their cup proceedings? We also understand, as has already been mentioned, that there was a similar situation within the last year at 4 Armstrong where a variance was granted for a B&B, but the tourist lodging next door was never discussed. So, again, it begs the question, why are we being told one thing and 8 Washington, as well as 4 Armstrong, being told another? It seems the Planning Commission is making arbitrary and capricious decisions to us. We understand that the city has placed a moratorium on any new tourist lodging in R1, but not for any new B&Bs. According to Attorney Stephen Williams, this indicates that the city sees them as two different things. At that same Planning Commission meeting on May 24th, James Morris stated that, quote, "We are not sure what similar means," unquote. So, how can they vote on something for which they have no understanding? In addition, Woody Accord stated, in defense of his yes vote, that there are, quote, "There are other issues involved. This cup application is worthy of approval and good for the city," unquote. Many people who have opposed us speak about wanting to protect the residential neighborhoods. Why is there nothing in our process to protect us? Thank you.
All right. We have any further discussion?
Just one last comment, and I 100% agree with Steve Beecham and the concepts here of protecting the residential area. And I do firmly believe that the Planning Commission will take this topic on, work through it, and give us some recommendations at a future point. And one of them could even be, let's just go ahead and ban B&Bs totally in R1, and that's a possibility, too. They've got a lot of options to do, to look at. But protecting the neighborhoods and protecting the residential areas is important. In this case, however, I'm voting for them to have it because I think this has just been a disaster.
All right. Anybody else? All right, we got a motion and a second that basically approved the conditional use permit. So, I guess we need a...we should have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Five, zero.
All right, unanimous. All right, unanimous that you have, Mr. Brandon, the conditional use permit. All right. Uh, thank you, everybody, for, for your, for your time and efforts. It's been a hard one to go through, I know.
Bob.
Um.
Bob, did you get this from Judith, this stuff?
Okay.
It was in the file.
Went in the vault and looked through the planning commission.
Um, all right, now, our next item on the agenda, if I am not mistaken, is the, uh.
Actual number two.
Mr. Gurkin, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Gurkin.
Mr. Gurkin.
Hickory Street, yeah.
Hickory Street.
Finally.
Sorry, Mr. Gurkin. Didn't recognize you with your hat on. All right, amen.
Good to see everybody again, and I, uh, I'm here again, and I'm still Jim Gurkin, although I'm almost 80 years old now, but I'm still here.
You haven't changed a bit in the last 40 years, Jim.
Okay, no, I'm gonna turn it over to you, darling. You took it over here. All right, okay.
Take your hat. Forty years you'll have to smooth more hair.
She, uh, I see, okay.
I got your back, Jim.
All right, all right. Jennifer witnessed my frustration with this process that I've been through for months now. Is it months? Yes, has to be. And so she told me, she said, Dad, you're 80 years old. Let me take this over so before you kill yourself.
Time goes by quicker when you get older.
Yes. Have you noticed that, too?
That's what my grandmother said.
That's, I remember this. This guy's the only person here that's been in town in this room longer than me. When I came here, he was a child. He lived with his grandmother across from the Basin Park Hotel. Yes, I remember. You were a child.
All right, well, we can stop right there.
I'm not saying how old you are. I already told you how old I am. All right, we'll go, we'll leave that right there. Everybody has a copy of what I'm trying to do.
Before we go, we need a motion to.
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss, okay.
Um, if I may, Jim, before you get started, I may just, and I'm not sure how this will go, but I'd like to save a little time.
Okay.
If possible, I think everyone's had an opportunity to look at this over because it's, it's been on the table.
Yep.
And, and it already has the blessing of parks. And, uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we need to craft a, an ordinance to do this, I believe.
I think we have an ordinance. Do we?
We don't have one ready yet, but.
I'll second that.
But I would craft, that, that we, you know, let's execute it. Let's get it done.
Okay, we got an ordinance on the other.
And I'll second that one again.
The first ordinance would be to take the property back from parks.
Okay.
And then when that's done, the second ordinance would be to.
To abandon it, yeah, yeah, or swap it, whatever they're gonna do.
So your motion is.
I think, I think we need, the motion is, is, is going to be.
Okay, first, yeah, we can just go ahead and do that.
And one, that this motion is to first, uh, take the, the land back from parks. Second, craft an ordinance to, if that's what we need, to, to trade. And then, third, to execute the trade.
Do you have to have an ordinance to close that street?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, is that part of the trade you asked about?
Well, yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, okay. Because the street has to be closed, or I don't need it.
You know, but, yeah, that, that includes that, Jim. That's.
Okay.
I still second that 100%. Get it done.
Okay, you want to read the, uh, the motion back?
I got the, an ordinance to take the land back from parks, and then, may I summarize and say to vacate the property? Okay, you're comfortable with my paraphrasing here? And we have a description?
We do.
Oh, good. Thank you.
We're going, we're going to vacate.
There's a third unit.
And, and then, once the vacation is done, then, he, Jim will get the property automatically on vacation. He's the property owner on both sides.
Yes.
And we will go ahead and, and he will then deed to parks those two pieces that improve their property. He's gonna deed that to the city. That's what he'll do.
No problem. The property's just.
That's on the map.
Given the way it's described right there, so.
Yeah.
What you're, what the city is giving to me, actually, is described also, I think, here.
This is great. Thank you.
Okay.
So you didn't finish the motion. You got, we're gonna vacate?
We're gonna take the land back from parks and then vacate the property. And we, the, the agreement that went through parks to simultaneously have Mr. Gurkin release a portion to parks could be woven into it.
Be, actually be deeded to the city.
Be deeded to the city, yeah.
Parks can only be deeded.
And that can all be done in one, one ordinance?
It's two. It would be the, in the second ordinance, correct?
It's two, I understand.
Thank you.
You need three total?
Two.
That's what I was saying.
Should be able to do it with two.
Yeah, yeah.
One to reclaim from parks.
Right.
One to do all the transfers and vacating and all that.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Is there any discussion?
Yes, that's what we were doing. I thought, go ahead.
Could I ask you just one question?
Absolutely.
Uh, when we, there's a lot of people in town like myself whose bike riding days are behind us, and we're more concerned about green spaces. And when we talked, you explained to me how critical it was to get this little piece of property, and also your commitment to maintaining green spaces in the city.
Correct.
Could you kind of go over that again?
Sure, I, I, I think we have an opportunity here where we've had a, we get something for something in this situation. Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Gurkin obviously gets the, the property, needs to make a contiguous piece, and then we also have a trail route that comes through there in that area. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not ashamed to go on record that I don't, I don't really feel like we should give away too much more property. I think our green space is something vital, and if you look long-term over the years, uh, you know, we, we may really regret getting rid of some of that green space. So I think there, this was a good situation where we got something that allows us to keep our master trail plan intact, and, uh, we still keep a little piece of green spaces away, but I, I do think it's, uh, a, a green space is a long-term thing we need to be looking at in our areas. We see with the new development in these buildings that go in 30, 40 years down the road, we, we may desperately want that.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motions, uh, think if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move.
All right, Mr. Gurkin, we're moving.
Okay.
Slowly but surely.
Good to know that we're moving.
I don't know what to ask.
Again, what he's saying, he'll be back.
Yeah, he'll be back.
He always is, though. He's been in front of me at least six times.
Okay, uh.
I know, I know.
Now, was the next.
Discussion of fire stations.
Start just from the county council.
Station?
Actually.
It's the fire department.
The fire department, isn't it?
Fire department discussion.
Yep.
Yes.
Um.
Okay.
Can we ask, oh, are we starting?
Get a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, can we ask Randy Yates and Dave Tigen to come in, please?
Ah, Randy's at the door. Okay.
Stay up there.
Right up here.
And I would like Randy to start out the discussion in regards to giving us background information, and we will go on from there.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council and mayor. First of all, let me start out by saying it's been a privilege being your fire chief. We have a great fire department and ambulance service, and I'm very proud to have been their leader for the last year and couple of months. What I wanted to bring before each night was a couple of items of concern that we have been discussing in-house. One of those is, uh, of course tied to the budget, and that's the future of our fire department. Things that are of concern is the possibility of the continued decline in revenues for the city, or the possibility that our proposed tax may not pass. We would strongly encourage the public and our council to support anything that could go forward towards supporting the fire department and EMS service. Now, in covering the EMS service part, one of the things I wanted to point out, using a little quick fact sheet here, if you guys would like to each take one and pass it on around.
There should be plenty for everyone.
One copy. Is our EMS service helps to offset the cost of operating the fire department. As a matter of fact, if you look on the left-hand side of the page, you will see that our yearly revenue is total.
Same thing.
Come up to almost half of our operating budget. I believe it's very important that we keep the ambulance service active in our fire department and keep the Western District contract, because that brings in considerable revenue sources to offset the operations of our fire department and our ambulance. I understand that this topic has only been up for just general discussion. There's been no move made, uh, no need for a panic, but yet I know that in these tight times, anything is open for discussion and could be fair game. I do not want to see us lose the Western District contract, nor its revenue that we're generating. Even by losing that contract, we would still need to operate an ambulance in the city, and because of our call volume, also noted on the fact sheet, we would probably need to continue with two ambulances. So right now, we are, uh, we have a boon from having that extra revenue coming in through the Western District, not only for the tax, uh, excuse me, for the tax revenue with the contract, but also for the revenue itself from billing for services. The other item with this is, should we decide to scale back ambulance service and personnel, it will impact our fire rating in through the city. Uh, it's come to my attention recently, after an eight-hour class with ISO, the insurance services organization, the people that rate the firefighting ability in your city, that the changes may negatively impact us. We are somewhat behind infrastructure-wise, like the rest of the city. We need to do whatever we can to stay up to speed to prevent that loss of that rating. Scaling back the ambulance service would also cause us to lose firefighter paramedics, which would also negatively impact the fire rating. And I understand that we have a gentleman that'll be speaking more about how that'll affect businesses, and is much more qualified than I. So to that end, my whole topic tonight is I want to tell you that I support Mayor Berry's proposal for a sales tax. We need that infrastructure money in the city. For the members of the public, the fire department strongly supports this tax. We definitely need that funding in the city to keep going and to serve you the best that we can. Can I answer any questions?
Mickey?
Um, Randy, would you explain about, I've got so many papers here, about the, um, the renovation proposal? Are you prepared to talk about any of it?
I can, if you'd like.
Okay, just a little bit, please.
One of the oddball tidbits that was thrown out during the recent meeting with ISO was that if they walk in and find a fire station that's not active, it ceases to become a fire station. And right now, our downtown station is in need of an overhaul. But let's face it, there's no money for an overhaul. Uh, my proposal, which Mayor Berry and I have been discussing, is to take the money from the sale of the White Street station and do a renovation on the station here downtown across the street to make it more usable. That includes, if enough funding is available from the sale, putting in restrooms so that we can entice our volunteers to spend time downtown during busy weekends. This benefits us because for every hour that we have a volunteer staying at the station, the insurance services office says that's equivalent to a full-time firefighter. However, if that volunteer is on call somewhere, at home, work, driving the car, grocery store, the only count is one-third of a firefighter. So the more that we can do to fix our station up and entice them to hang around downtown, especially on busy weekends, the quicker they can respond, the better our rating. And this won't cost the city anything but the, using the money from the sale.
Mickey?
Yep, we can just go back and forth if you want. Okay, um, explain how you are, what you're doing in regards to cutting back on the medical supplies that are required by law that y'all have. What it is that you're using to cut back on those expenses?
Thank you. The question is not going to have a nice answer. The equipment that we carry is regulated by the state. We have a minimum equipments list. Coupled in with that is the expiration of the various medications, bandages, and what have you. The, every year, that cost goes up with inflation. If any of you've been to the doctor or the hospital lately, you know that cost is, just continues to skyrocket. And the same is true with us. Unfortunately, the amount of money that actually, uh, we used last year was not allocated this year, so we are slightly overrunning our medical supplies. Also, we had, uh, a surge in calls at the beginning of the year, more so than we had the previous year, which also accounts for the increase in spending from that line item.
Okay, and the other thing was, um, I forgot, um, in regards to cutting back on expenses of when we train someone and then they leave, when we pay to have them trained and then they leave, explain what we would like to do with the handbook?
Chief Williams, uh, my predecessor put together a nice little study that says, how much money do we lose every time a firefighter or paramedic walks out the door that we trained? I was astonished. We lose around $70,000 that we have put into that employee every time one we train leaves. One of the suggestions has been that in order to retain the paramedics, which there's a shortage of medics, just like there's a shortage of nurses, to retain those paramedics and firefighters, we need to consider a contract with them. Since we're paying to send them to the training and send them to school, we should be able to recoup that funding that we've put into them. I think that it should be a two-way street. There should be something they have to look forward to with being with us, a guaranteed pay step program, an incentive program, a certificate program, something of that nature to help us keep these valuable firefighters and paramedics that other people are try, literally trying to lure away from us daily.
And the fact that if we have it in the handbook, um, they would either have to stay with us a minimum of four or five years or pay us back. So it would be a fair deal. We're getting to train people which are, they're getting harder and harder to get, at the same time, we're not out money a year later. So it would be a fair deal. But that's something we have to do in the city part of the handbook for fire department, is that contract. Okay, when there is a budget in regards to medical fuels, so on and so forth, explain what happens if we have a budget for one amount and you have to use more, like fuel?
We have two choices. We can not go on calls, or we can beg your forgiveness for going over on our line item.
And those are the only two options, guys.
James?
Just a point of order here. What topic are we discussing?
Yeah.
The fire department, the fire.
No, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. The topic we're discussing is the ordinances allowing the sale of the White Street fire.
No, we're not.
We're talking about.
We are discussing the fire department.
Just a generalization down at the bottom. That's.
It's fire department, discussion of.
David?
I need some clarification. What, what are we doing? I don't understand. What, what is this?
Mickey, Mickey, let me, let me, let me address something, and I'm sure Chief realizes this, too.
Yeah, we need David, you, too.
That, that, uh, the budget, at a mid-year budget, the budget can all be revised, and that's when you get caught up and make adjustments to the fire department budgets if you're running over budgets. This came up at the question at the last council meeting. Uh, certain things came up with medical supplies, gas, fuels. I asked Chief Yates to give me a, um, you know, answer to those. He gave me a written response. Uh, obviously, mid-year budget review, we can address those issues and raise them as required.
Okay, but that's not the point I was trying to get to.
I'm not sure what point you're, we're trying to get to.
Well, I'm getting there, but.
David, what?
I still don't understand what this is. We, it, this isn't making any sense to me. Is this some kind of?
Because we're not done.
It's some kind of, is this some kind of state of the union of the fire department? What's, what's going on here?
We have a major problem. We're trying to lay the groundwork.
Well, then tell us what the problem is, please, because I sure as hell haven't figured it out.
Okay, if Dave, if you'll come in, too. The situation is this. We have got to have a thoroughly functioning, working fire department. Butch and I have been here over 40 years each. We know what it was like when I was volunteer. We had a quarter of the shops open and five months of tourism. I think Terry was here then, too, or real close to them. We had a volunteer fire department then, and that was okay. There's no way that's going to happen now. But at the same time, with this city crunch going on, we need. But at the same time, with this city crunch going on, we need funds. We need to do stuff. We can't just go across the line on the budget that none of us had seen and cut fuel. You can't go out on a run. If you do, you get yelled at.
Mickey, point, let me, let me.
Point being, we have, the mayor and I have talked together, and we, and both of us have worked on this on our own sides and then got together, we have a very viable possibility for what we can do to try to save the fire department, the homeowners, and the businesses.
Mickey, at this point, you're dealing with budget. Is that correct, basically?
No, it's not a budget.
My understanding is we are dealing with budget. You're talking about whether or not we're cutting stuff.
No, that was mentioned. That is not it. Dave has facts and figures that's going to affect us, the homeowners, business owners, and the city in general. If you'll give him, what, two minutes to give your numbers?
I'm going to go for point of order because this is just getting out of hand here. This is, no.
Discussion of fire departments.
Point of order.
That's it, right there.
Point of order.
We're discussing it.
Point of order.
Okay, what?
I want Dave to give you his numbers so we know what's going to happen if we don't work on this.
Mickey, wait a minute.
You are making accusations that absolutely have no foundation at all. Nobody's taking, getting rid of the fire department, nobody's getting rid of the ambulance department. The mayor is actually acting as the administrator and dealing with budget issues and asking for accountability at the end of the line. And when somebody asks the department director for accountability, they ought to be able to produce the numbers without having somebody set up here and second-guess what's going on. And all of this conversation is absolutely a hypothetical waste of time.
First of all, no accusations have been laid or anything else. Numbers are here. I said we are trying to do something to help the fire department, which means us people. Now, if y'all would just let Dave, who has waited almost two hours to just give his numbers, we have a solution.
James?
I apologize to y'all, given the fact that we have people outside wanting to address the issues of the fire department. We have two topics on old business that relate to the sale of the fire station and funds going to, as you said, a new fire station. I, in my opinion, this is a budgetary issue that should be dealt with at our mid.
But we're not talking the budget.
Mickey, please. You embarrass us by interrupting us every time.
Okay, well, it's not that.
I offer you the same respect. I don't know how this got on the agenda. I mean, we've got three other items that deal with the fire department, so y'all are here for the, for these reasons. I just feel that we're keeping people waiting. This is a budgetary issue, should be dealt with next month when we do our mid-year budget review. I apologize.
All right, where are we, where are we going here, Mickey?
It's not being presented as a budgetary thing. It's an informational thing.
Mickey, can you wrap up your, we've got the information.
Will you let Dave give his numbers?
David, I'm not sure.
We're talking a couple minutes.
I don't want to present this if it's going to be a problem with the council. Basically, I was asked to come in and give, my name is David, I'm sorry. My name is David Tygen. I own.
Who was asking you to come in?
Mickey asked me to come by, and Randy actually contacted me in the middle of last month and asked me to do some rate comparisons if there was an ISO change within the, within this city.
But we're not, we're not having an ISO change at this point. Is that correct?
To, not to my knowledge.
All right, then, I would, I would like to have a motion if we can to, you know, move on or whatever we need to do.
Table this discussion to budgetary review, our mid-year budget.
It's not budgetary.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to table the budget. Do I have, got a motion and second? Do you have any further comments? All right, all those in favor, sing probably saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Bob, did you vote aye?
I said aye.
All right, four one. I apologize for bringing you in here, you know, and, and sitting around, so thank you for coming anyway. I appreciate it.
So when all your little rates go up, hundreds of dollars, remember this evening, because that's what's going to happen.
All right.
We still have a call?
We still have a call?
Yes.
So our next order of business, all right, help me out here, is the White Street?
Summary of Improvement District.
No, we moved the, oh, we did.
But we can lay it.
Yeah, can I get a motion to defer the Improvement District Workshop summary?
So move. Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, sing probably saying aye.
Next meeting.
To the next meeting, okay. Our next order of business is the, this is where we're reversing ordinance to rectify the encroachments on White Street Fire Station.
Number four.
Get a motion to discuss?
So move. Second.
All right. Mr. Weaver, you want to give us a brief summary of what we're doing here?
What you have presented to you is a draft ordinance that would switch the two pile-shaped pieces of property that ostensibly where the fire station overlaps into Mr. Beecham's property. This is drafted in order to give quick claim deed between the two property owners, city being one side, Mr. Beecham being the other side. The things that I think the council needs to be aware of is it does entail switching with a quick claim deed, so we're not warranting that because there is still issues of what's going to happen in all of this. Number two, it does so with the intent that if there are any leases in place.
Joyce?
Go ahead.
Or, or other items.
I was just wondering, please, could we take a break?
Well, okay, yeah, we can take five minutes. Motion to, take a five-minute break?
Sure, motion to, for five-minute recess.
All right, second. Okay.
Okay, you got to go? You got to go?
No, I just need, what, Joyce?
Joyce just passed away.
Oh, my God.
That's why we didn't hear from her today, she didn't show.
Yeah.
All right, welcome back everyone and we will continue with Mr. Weaver's summary of our White Street legal issues.
As I was saying, you have an ordinance in front of you to, for your consideration that basically will swap the triangles that currently appear to overlap partially into the fire station and partially into Mr. Beecham's yard. And it does so by quitclaim, which is the way the city typically transfers property. We don't transfer more than what we have that way. It also clarifies that the transfer would be subject to any filed liens, any filed leases, any filed other documents or known documents that would cloud either title. I think Mr. Beecham will tell you if you ask that he owns his property free and clear and it is my expectation that the city owns the property that is the city's free and clear other than you've debated a couple of times whether there may be this lease that is out there held by...
Dick Titus.
Mr. Titus. Thank you. Other than that, I don't know that there are any, nothing that I've been made aware of and nothing the surveyor seemed to indicate on his survey that would indicate that there's any other claims against any of the two pieces of property.
Yeah, for Mr. Weaver, please. Just so we make it clear on the front end that Parks is not involved in this. It's not green space. It's nothing under their purview, so we don't need to take anything back from them or...
The best I can tell from what Mr. Titus' research has done is that the, what would've at one time become green space had already been vacated prior to that time period. So that in the back that could've been the unused alleyway or unused street that would've normally been what we were discussing as green space never became green space. And then, of course, the fire station building itself has never been transferred to Parks or anyone else as green spaces.
Just making sure we had the all clear and everybody understood that.
Any other questions?
Other than the motion?
Good motion to assign a number?
Sign two, a number to each one?
Now, let's do one.
Which one is first, please?
You need to do the one with two descriptions on it first.
It says to Beecham.
Yeah, okay. Make a motion to assign an ordinance authorizing the exchange of certain real estate parcels on parcels lot four or five and number and read it on its first reading.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number will be 2241. An ordinance authorizing the exchange of certain real estate parcels located on parts of lots four and five of block 52 of the Armstrong and Riley survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas has been requested to trade title to certain real estate and whereas there is a physical encroachment of a city-owned building on certain private property. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. That. Section one. Title to the section herein described below and belonging now to the city shall be exchanged for the title to the section herein described below and belonging to Steve Beecham. Such exchange shall be by quitclaim deed, subject to all known encumbrances, leases and other interests. The office of the mayor is hereby authorized to sign all documents needed to effectuate this transfer on behalf of the city. City to Beecham, tract E. A part of lot four, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas and being more particularly described as follows. Commence at the northeast corner of said lot four for the point of beginning, then south seven degrees forty-nine minutes fifty-seven seconds west two hundred, two point four-three feet. To an extension of the north wall of the old fire station, then along said line, north eighty-two degrees fifty-seven minutes twenty-five seconds west forty-eight point five-five feet to a point on the north line of said lot four. Then south eighty-five degrees forty-seven minutes thirty-three seconds east forty-eight point six-four feet to the beginning, to the point of beginning containing fifty-nine point one square feet more or less. Beecham to the city, tract F. A part of lot five, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas and being more particularly described as follows. Commence at the southeast corner of said lot five, then along the south line of said lot five, north eighty-five degrees forty-seven minutes thirty-three seconds west forty-eight point six-four feet to a point on the north wall of the old fire station for the point of beginning. Thence continue along the south line of said lot five, north eighty-five degrees forty-seven minutes thirty-three seconds west seven point one-eight feet to a point on the west wall of said fire station, thence north seven degrees eight minutes and six seconds east point three-six feet to the northwest corner of said fire station, then south eighty-two degrees fifty-seven minutes twenty-five seconds east seven point one-seven feet to the, to the point of beginning containing one point two-nine square feet more or less. Section two. That provision of this ordinance, provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section three. All ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. Jim McClung?
Make a motion and we approve ordinance 2241 on its first reading?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All right. All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2241 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any comments?
James, will you read the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Four zero. Ordinance number 2241, an ordinance authorizing the exchange of certain real property, real estate parcels located on parts of lots four and five of block 52 of the Armstrong and Riley survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas.
And Mr. McClung?
I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2241, second reading.
Second.
Rock call?
Yes, it's okay.
No, that was not...
All in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next two will be...
All right, Mr. McClung?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2241 up for its third and final reading.
Title only.
By title only.
Second.
Okay, now we get a roll call. Any discussion?
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Four zero. Ordinance number 2241, an ordinance authorizing the exchange of certain real estate parcels located on parts of lot four and five of block 52 of the Armstrong and Riley survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas.
And Mr. Drew McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to approve ordinance number 2241.
Third reading?
Third reading.
Second.
Now we do a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Four zero.
Okay. Now then, our next order of business will be, need to get a motion to discuss the ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate parcels.
Sum of?
Second.
All right, Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to assign a number to this ordinance for passage and read it for its first reading.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
This number will be 2242. Do you want to read this one?
No.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate parcels located on parts of lots four and five of block 52 of the Armstrong and Riley survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas.
I will read it if you want me to. You want me to?
Go for it.
Okay. Whereas the city of Eureka, city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas has decided to sell its title of certain real estate and whereas state law and city code allows disposal of city real estate by sealed bid auction. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section one. The office of mayor is hereby authorized to advertise for and conduct a sealed bid auction to dispose of the city's interests in the following real estate commonly known as the White Street Fire Station and more particularly described as tract A. The south half of lot four, front and back, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County. Said tract containing thirteen hundred eighty-three point fifty-eight square feet more or less. Tract B. A part of the north half of lot four, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas and being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the northeast corner of said lot four, said point being the point of beginning, then south seven degrees forty-nine minutes fifty-seven seconds west, twenty feet, thence north eighty-five degrees forty-nine minutes thirty-three seconds west, fifty-five point five-eight feet. Thence north seven degrees eight minutes six seconds east, nineteen point ninety-nine feet. Then south eighty-eight, eighty-five degrees forty-five minutes thirty-three seconds east, fifty-five point eight-three feet to the point of beginning, said described tract containing one thousand one hundred and eleven point eight-four square feet more or less. Tract C. A part of the north half of lot four, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas and being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the northwest corner of said lot four, said point being the point of beginning, then south eighty-five degrees forty-nine minutes thirty-three seconds east, thirteen point four-nine feet. Then south seven degrees eight minutes six seconds west, nineteen point ninety-nine feet. Thence north eighty-five degrees forty-nine minutes thirty-two seconds west, thirteen point seven-four feet. Then north seven degrees forty-nine minutes fifty-seven seconds east, twenty feet to the point of beginning and said described tract containing two hundred and seventy-one point seven-four square feet more or less. Tract D. All of that part of Edward Street, lying west of lot four, block 52 of the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas. Said tract containing six hundred and forty-two point thirteen square feet more or less. Tract F. A part of lot five, block 52 of Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas. Being more particularly described as follows. Commence at the southeast corner of said lot five, then along south line of said lot five, north eighty-five degrees forty-nine minutes thirty-three seconds west, forty-eight point six-four feet to a point of beginning on the north wall of the old fire station for the point of beginning. Then continue along south wall, south line of said lot five, north eighty-five degrees forty-nine minutes thirty-three seconds west, seven point one-eight feet to a point, to a point on the west wall of said fire station. Thence north seven degrees eight minutes six seconds east, point thirty-six feet to the northwest corner of said, said fire station. Then south eighty-two degrees fifty-seven minutes twenty-five seconds east, seven point one-seven feet to the point of beginning containing one point two-nine square feet more or less. Sale shall be by quitclaim deed, subject to all known leases, encumbrances and other claims. Section two. The final written bids must be received by the city on, I guess we need a date here.
Can we, can we leave it? Can we leave that date blank until...
We can go ahead and finish reading it and then you guys will need to set that date. That's part of your duties as the council.
Okay. Let me go ahead and finish reading this and then we can set the date. The bid shall be owned by the mayor on the same designee, on the same day in the presence of... Okay, section three. City reserves the right to reject any and all of its bids at its discretion. Section four. The mayor is hereby authorized to sign all documents needed to effectuate the sale of, on behalf of the city. Section five. That provision of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining of this ordinance. Section six. All ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent such conflict. All right.
How long do you usually put bids out? Do you have a timeframe that's required by law or something? I'm just asking. Is there a time limit that's required? You would know, Anne.
I don't know the answer to that question.
You haven't heard one.
I see. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, just figured it out. I figured it'd be the fifteenth of July, we do all three readings this evening and then thirty days later it becomes law. So, and then you can put it out and you, there's no reason why you couldn't even post it before that, before the end of that thirty period, thirty day period, but you can, if you, even if you wait it till then, you can, you know, the bids in by August fifteenth. That's basically two months from now.
So you couldn't do, you couldn't go ahead and be collecting bids while we're waiting for the thirty days and then do it all at the same time?
I personally think you could, but, but I don't, but it, I don't know if you can get it, you know, ready enough.
To get the bids?
Yeah, get it published and follow that.
Yeah, the notices and all, don't we?
You, you need to make your notices out at least two weeks before your opening, but there's not a restriction on putting them out sooner. The only restriction you've got in this is technically for another thirty days, the transfer between the city and Mr. Beecham has not occurred.
We can give us a date, sir.
I think, I think Terry's analysis, Mr. McClung's analysis is perfect.
August the...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of July?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
Yeah, for the bids.
That's a Monday. Okay. We can do it that and then the following twenty-second, give it to the council for acceptance of the bids. Yeah.
So, August fifteenth by what time?
Two o'clock. Received by the mayor on...
You wanna, you wanna make, well, it doesn't matter. I was gonna say we, you could make it the eighth if that would work and that would be meeting night.
Yeah, we can make it the eighth. There's no reason.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then the bids will be opened when?
August eighth.
Attorney still happy with all those?
Must be received by the city on August eighth by two P.M. Bid shall be owned by the mayor or designee at two, it says M, but I'm assuming two, two P.M.
Same date in the presence of?
Finance director.
If you want those amendments, you need one of them to make a motion to amend it to that manner, amendment vote.
Okay.
By what time? Five P.M.?
Two.
Two P.M.
Okay. So basically what that says is final written bids must be received by the city on August eighth by two P.M. Bid shall be owned by the mayor or his designee at two P.M. on the same day in the presence of the finance director. Okay, do I get a motion to...
Move to amend ordinance number 2242, adding the words under section two, that the final written bids must be received by the city on August eighth by two P.M. Bid shall be opened by the mayor or his designee at two P.M. on the same day in the presence of the finance director.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments?
I, on that or can we?
On that. Do you have any questions on that? All right. On favor of the amendment as suggested, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now then, did you have, Mr. McClung?
Well, I was just gonna go ahead and put it up.
Okay, did you have another question?
I wanted to just ask about section number three. Reserve the right to reject any and all bids at its discretion. So, how does that work? Is that just council sitting here saying, looking at the bids and saying?
If, if, basically if we get a bid for five dollars, we ain't saying, we ain't gonna sell it. I mean, I'd give you a recommendation, not sell for five bucks.
The mayor will bring, bring the bids to you and make a recommendation, if he has a recommendation, as to which of the bids is appropriate or inappropriate.
Is there an appraisal on the building?
Yes.
Could that...
We have two.
Could that be a minimum bid or...
We don't really set a minimum bid typically on bids for the city. That though provision to reject bids gives you the right to reject them if you don't believe it brings what it's worth.
Okay.
And it also gives you the opportunity, if all the bids come in way under, you could still sell the property if you need to or want to, even though it's below the appraised value, because the appraised value could always be wrong if you make that determination.
But in this case, we don't have an appraised value. We'll just have Terry sitting here at the desk to tell us.
True.
I, I believe it's been appraised twice.
Oh, it had been?
Two separate appraisers.
Oh, thank you. I did not realize that.
And it's, it's roughly around, you know, it's under a million dollars.
A million, but it's not zero.
It's, it's over five dollars and it's under a million.
Under a million.
Cool. Good. Titus has more money than I thought, I guess, you know.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll be able to do a lot. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll be able to do a lot. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two forty-two, first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Oh, we already did, yeah. All, all in favor, Saint Fabre saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-two forty-two up for a second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Is that by?
Yep. Okay, so this will be... Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Four zero. Ordinance number two-two four-two, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate parcels located on parts of Lots Four and Five of Block Fifty-Two of the Armstrong and Riley survey, to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas.
Mr. McClung?
I can make, make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two forty-two, second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Is that by?
This is okay.
All in favor, Saint Fabre saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-two forty-two up for its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Four zero.
All right.
So... Ordinance number two-two four-two, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate parcels located on parts of Lots Four and Five of Block Fifty-Two of the Armstrong and Riley survey, to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas.
Mr. McClung?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-two forty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Four zero?
Yes, yes.
All right. Take care of that. Uh, oh. All right, I have, let's see.
Washington Street.
Washington Street. Okay, get a motion to discuss?
So, move. Second.
Um, I know, uh, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Snyder asked for an ordinance to be prepared, but because of all the, at that time, we thought there wasn't any controversy, it was, it was, uh, everybody agreed. Uh, since then, we've, we've heard that there is some discussion, so, uh, I guess what I need to throw it up for discussion on council, Mr. McClung?
Go ahead, sir.
David?
There is a lot of discussion going on here about this issue, but I think it sums up pretty well with the letter that we have received from Fire Marshal Kelly, which puts this issue on a public safety issue. Last Thursday, he came up on Washington Street with a fire truck and his statement, and, and an ambulance, and he tried to access Point Street, which comes off, uh, right across from about Eight Washington. It's a small, uh, little gravel road and goes down. On Point Street, there are two houses on the left, one house on the right, and the people that own the multifamily dwelling that have had discussion about their people parking there are just received, uh, started the process and have received applications to build another house down on Point Street and parking for two. At one time, the, uh, there was a discussion about turning that into parking spaces that had taken place with the Director of Public Works, but at some point, that process changed, and instead, it's become a house, which makes total sense, and it's in the application process. But we have here a letter from the fire marshal, which very clearly says, had there been vehicles parked there, we would not have been able to access all. If the city is responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, that would obviously mean that we're responsible for the ability to get fire suppression equipment to them should the need arise and their house be on fire. So, at this point in time, we would have one, two, three, four houses down on Point Street, three houses and one being developed, that would not have access to the fire suppression equipment to get down there. Now, I don't know what about those people's houses, their insurance would think that the city can't get a fire truck down there should they catch on fire, and I'm not too sure what would happen in such a condensed neighborhood, should one of the houses get on fire and the fire department not be able to reach it. Does that mean that the other structures around that area are also at risk now because the city cannot provide, uh, fire suppression? I do agree, however, though, that I think what, it would be prudent on the city's part to also ask the fire department to do a survey across all of the city limits, finding any place where there is a street that cannot be accessed because there is parking across from it, or there, or, or there is other issues that inhibit the fire department from getting fire suppression equipment down to put out a fire. I think that is important, no doubt, and that's what we're dealing with here, is that. There's also at that multifamily where the, the lady that has the, um, the impairment, there is one parking space that's used by a, a lady that, that is not impaired, that could easily be saved for those people so she wouldn't have to walk. But this isn't a personality issue, this isn't an issue because people don't want cars in the front of it. This literally is a public safety issue that arose when finally somebody was residing in the house at Washington Street that was able to observe the congestion and the issues that had gone along with traffic along that road, and brought up the question about safety, and that's what started it in the first place. So, again, I want to repeat, the fire chief has done a complete assessment of that, or the Assistant Chief Kelly as of last Thursday, and I stood there and talked to him about it, and they were not able to get that fire truck down there.
Mr. McClung?
Um, yes, I, and, and I appreciate that, David, and I, and I appreciate, um, Assistant Chief Kelly's, uh, uh, opinion on, on that, and, and, uh, and I understand where he's coming from. I mean, fire suppression, all that, I mean, that's number one in his book, that's what he's gotta look at. Um, I haven't lived here for a real long time, but, but I've been here a fairly long time, and I spent twenty years on the fire department. We never had a problem. Went anywhere we wanted to. Uh, so, you know, there's not, there's, it's congested at times, um, but people always manage to get through. They have for years. I don't recall accidents up there. Uh, and I'm sure there have been some fender benders, but there's not been anything major. I don't remember ever, uh, having a fire at the Crescent or any of those houses through there that, that we've been to, uh, uh, even down on, um, uh, Rogers Alley and down in through there, that we, we've never had a problem getting around. So, you know, I, I have to agree, I think the parking is, is an important thing to have there. There are other similar situations like that, uh, along the historic loop, and I don't see any really reason to change.
Did you ever take a fire truck down Point Street to try and stop anything? Did you, I mean, you've run it, you got yourself running up and down?
I don't know if we ever did or not.
You've got yourself running up and down the, you've got yourself going up and down sixty-two. We're talking specifically about the parking on the west side of Washington Street that you can't access the fire truck to Point Street, not all that other stuff you brought up.
Well, it, it's not a perfect world.
Oh, so it's not a perfect world?
No, sir, it's not.
What you're gonna tell somebody when the houses are on fire and they can't get a fire truck down there? That's brilliant.
It's not a perfect world.
Bob?
So, if we start going around the town and trying to get fire trucks in and out, how much money are we gonna spend making the town fire truck accessible?
I don't know, but then again, do you, how about the people that don't have access to a fire truck, and how's their, what are they gonna do with their insurance?
I probably don't have access to a fire truck, quite frankly. I can't imagine wondering them at my house, and I'm wondering how much you're gonna spend to why, you know, put in a longer?
I don't know what we're gonna do, but if we're responsible for the health, safety, and welfare, my question is, we now have a health, safety, welfare issue sitting in front of us. Have at it any way you want, but I think when we take on the discussion here, and we have that, and we just say, well, we have a city, and we're city limits, and we don't have access by fire suppression equipment to get to various parts of the city, then I think that's a discussion to be having.
Oh, it's good discussion, yeah.
Mr. McClung?
I believe that if you set a precedent with this, precedent with this, then you're gonna look at, at all up there at, at the, uh, at the Episcopal Church, and have to remove all of that, and they depend on that parking, and if you can't do it now, then you can't, you can't do it later. That's what I'm saying, you know, if you can't do it on, on, park there on Monday, you can't park there Sunday morning either, just like, but you, if you take it away from the library, and all along through there on, on Springfield, you're looking at the same situation.
I think anytime you have a street that T-bones into a, a street that the fire truck needs to be able to, to make a turn to go down a street, it should be looked at, because you're not, you're not giving those people on that street the same health, safety, welfare, and protection that this city provides to other people. Um, the issue was raised here. It's, it's, and it's been brought up, it's been put before us, you know? When, when the fire department ended up with the, the issue about the breathing equipment, and it got put at this table, we had to take a look at it, and because it was related to the, the safety of firemen that they could, that, and it also is a liability issue. I'm just saying, I think this is a liability issue, and it should be looked at under the health, safety, and welfare. That's all I'm saying.
James?
Um, I might feel a little differently than I do if, if this was instigated by the fire department, if they felt that, you know, uh, this was a street that, that in their determination was not adequate for their needs, uh, but in the reality, the situation was brought to them, and I agree with what Mr. Thomas said, that if we were to query the fire department on every street in town, we'd probably find this response unfortunately to be common in a lot of situations. Uh, I'd like to allocate some of my time to Mr. King, if there's no complaints.
Bill, you wanna come up? Mr. King?
Uh, okay, we're, so, first of all, as far as my, my handicap resident, they drive a large van, and I have a tiny little parking space there, so, as far as accommodating her, that would not work. Um, this was, this was brought to the fire department, it was brought to the police department, it was brought to the public works, it was brought to every place it could possibly be brought to, where they could try to find some reason to take the parking off the street. That's how this came about. It did not originate with the fire department. I contacted Mr. Kelly to talk about it, um, and, um, as far as ambulance is getting down there today, when there was parking, every spot on the street was taken, and, uh, Jimmy Kelly met me there in the ambulance, and the only place he could park was on Point Street, so he turned it, easily turned the ambulance into Point Street and parked there. Fire trucks, you know, they're a little long. Point Street is only a hundred, eh, it's under two-hundred feet long, so it's not like it's, it's, you're going to go down to the end of the world. Um, there may, you know, I, I just don't know what to say, I don't know what else to say about it, other than it's, it's going to be a huge inconvenience, it's a problem all over town, um, and I don't know why, why this one portion of parking that is really needed is being targeted here. And I'm, I'll answer any questions.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I'd like to hear from chief, the fire chief.
And I have questions. Do you have, uh, other ideas in the city where there are places that you couldn't get a fire truck to, to help with fire suppression should one break out?
Yes, uh, two streets come to mind, one of those is Jackson Street, where the street is literally so narrow, we can't get down when vehicles are parked there, and also Benton Street, the section that dead ends, runs, uh, right here behind downtown because of the parking at the entrance, and we have had a fire there, we have very difficult time getting a fire truck in. One of the things I have here is copies of the fire code for you, that we have adopted by the city. If you guys would like to take one, pass it down. The fire department recognizes that this is a tight town, and it is difficult to maneuver. There's not a lot of parking. Ideally, we would like to have every street completely open, traffic flowing both ways, so we can get through easily. It's not going to happen. The street, this town and its streets don't lend itself to that. We do have a unique case here, because by our own fire codes the city has adopted, we're responsible for being able to make sure we have fire access, and in this case, we can't turn the fire truck from either direction to be able to turn on to Point Street. That puts the citizens at the end of Point Street and living along Point Street at risk. Therefore, I believe that if we ignore this issue, we're deliberately accepting liability should something go wrong.
So, based on the fire codes, um, would there be a different fire rating for those people down there? Would, so what would happen to their insurance on their own homes if they, if the insurance companies knew that they didn't have fire protection by the city?
Their insurance could go up significantly, some insurance companies may choose not to insure them at all. What we are, excuse me, sir, what we are requesting that maybe solve this is to have sixty feet on either side of that intersection painted red, and no parking allowed, that way, fire engine can turn from either direction to turn on the street. Sorry, sir.
What do you, what are your proposed solutions for Jackson Street and Benton Street?
For Benton Street, I think that if we can address the parking just at the entrance of that section of Benton, that it's completely solvable, if the residents of the first two houses can work with us, I believe they have room to park further off street or can find alternate parking. Jackson Street's going to be very difficult. It is a narrow lane, and there is no place to park, no place hardly to pass. That street, I think the best approach on that is going to be, again, talking with the residents and seeing if we can at least approach from each end, even if we can't get to the center, that we can reach the houses.
Okay, I missed the end of?
On Jackson Street, if we can make arrangements to be able to come in from either end of Jackson Street, even if we can't reach the middle, we can still get the fire trucks close enough to combat the fires.
So, how are, can you get in from either end now?
No, sir, we cannot.
So, what are we gonna have to do?
Right now, we're going to probably have to get several of our firemen and drag hoses for about fifteen minutes to get?
No, I meant, how are, how are you gonna fix it? What, what's, I'm not.
Right, uh, what we would have to do is, uh, try to bring it to the council about any painting of curves, 'cause it all is in city ordinance, the council has to approve any particular curb painting or changes, so we'd have to do research, that particular street, and bring it back to the council for recor, with a recommendation.
Jackson Street you're talking?
Jackson Street, Benton Street, any of the streets, yes, sir.
So, you say those are the only two you're aware of?
No, I'm sure there, there are many more, but those are the two that come to mind at the moment.
Right.
And I'm afraid, like was said, this is a problem that will have to be addressed piecemeal one by one, with the most serious cases first. This one's been brought to our attention, therefore, we have to look at it.
So, if a lot of people are watching this show tonight, and they all call in tomorrow and ask to have a fire truck and an ambulance come out, what will happen?
We will do that.
And then, if there, if there's fifty of them that need much more work than just painting something red, you know, like if you're gonna have to build a new access road or, or, you know?
We'll have to address them one by one, and see what we can do for the best solutions for each one. It'd be a, a time-consuming process. Fortunately, I, I believe that many of the solutions, which just involves cooperation on the part of residents, and where and how they park, enforcement for current, uh, parking violations, which our police department does address, and working with, uh, this council on addressing those sticky issues such as this one. Thank you, council. Thank you, council.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Yes, sir. When Assistant Chief Kelly was there today, we discussed possible compromise, that, you know, what they're asking for in their, in their ideal world is to have fire trucks be able to come from either direction and turn into Point Street. But there would be, I can't, I don't know what circumstance would require a fire truck to come from the other side. Both fire stations are off, you know, they would come up either Benton or around the loop to get there. They don't need to, they wouldn't be coming from the other direction. So if you just took the very first segment where there is parking in front of the old nursing home, right to where the utility poles are, he told me that yes, a fire truck could indeed access the road with just, and we would only lose one parking space on the street, instead of four or five if you went 60 feet in both directions. So that's-
Is that a satisfactory solution? You said a compromise.
It's a compromise, you know, we, ideally, you know, for my tenants, they need the parking, but if we had to give up a space, I mean-
You've kind of got a double-edged sword. It's your property down there, too, that they're trying to protect, so, I mean.
Yep.
So, James?
Well, I tend to agree with Mr. King that the fire trucks are only going to come from one direction. And I see that as a potential compromise to the situation.
Mr. Mitchell?
What I'd like to do is make a motion that we table this until Mr. Kelly has a chance to give us a different letter that takes the wording out, "Had there been vehicles parked there, we wouldn't be able to access," and that he build into this letter what he's, he has talked to Mr. King about. And then, in essence, then we would have documentation from the Fire Department that the issue is satisfactory to them to take the space out, in which case that does make a great compromise. But right now, this letter puts us in a position of concern, so if nobody would mind, could we just table this?
I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, singh, sing aye?
Aye.
Any paws? All right, so move. All right, we'll get with Fire Marshal and go ahead.
What he told me is in, you know, Fire, the Fire Department is always going to want as much access from every direction as they can possibly get, and that's what they're asking for. But it's up to you all to make the call on it, is what he told me. Do you agree with that? Chief? Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's Washington Street. Gosh, gosh.
God almighty.
Where are we?
New business floor.
Hmm?
Number four.
New business four, this first month, April financial review. Is that it? Is that what we're on? Yep. Good news, bad news? Our spending freeze is, is working positive. We have cut down tremendously. I'm not sure, did we get copies of this to the council members?
Yes.
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 Okay. When you look at the bottom line, just remember that almost 200,000 of that comes from transit, so it's not as, not as red ink as it looks like. I would give you mine, but I need it to talk about. Basically, our expenses, the departments are doing great in keeping the expenses down well within our 33% of the budget that we should have. The general fund, we're at 31.54, the streets 25, water and sewers 29, transit's 45, but again, that's, they got a grant, and the $200,000 is implied into that. So, the revenues were still not quite up to where we should be, we're, you know, a little bit under, basically, instead of 33.06, we're at 32.9. So we're close. And the same thing with the expenses, we're 32.93 overall. So, we're, you know, our spending freeze is working. That's the good news. I think we did have some questions that were asked at the last council meeting about the Fire Department budget. Basically, the budget got cut, and yeah, there, we do have, their spending were over. We've addressed some of it with the, with the fuel. We discovered that the new fire truck was, was getting fuel, was paying off-road taxes, so now we've resolved that issue, so hopefully we'll find our fuel costs down. Also, the fuel was in the working of that, they ran the truck more, so we had a little bit more fuel cost. The medical supplies were 8%. And again, I think these are some of the items we're just going to have to address when we get to mid-year budget, you know. Granted, it's what I, what I was trying to tell Mickey, the budget was cut, and we're just going to have to address that when we get at mid-year and see where we are. The Fire Department is trying their best to keep it within their, their spending limits. Everybody else is doing good, too. So, that's kind of the, the short on that. Any questions? Mr. Mitchell?
No, no real questions, but I think a lot of times, when the city historically has utilized reserve money to pad the budget over a period of time, or anything else, it's very difficult for department heads, especially service departments that provide services that are taxpayer-done, to, to take a look and have to cut back. It's a very difficult situation, but you know, the bottom line is that the revenue coming in isn't covering the expenses, something's got to give.
Yeah. Well, you know, we're a small town, but we supply for a town of, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 people, so the budget is hard to deal with at times. Anyway, I appreciate you all working with me on that. Next item is, I think, discussion of B and Bs, James?
I'd move to table that to our next meeting. Second, you guys owe me.
Okay.
If you wanted a comprehensive discussion, you weren't going to get it.
Well, you might have gone ahead and done it, it would be a quick one. Yes, well, we, we'll get there. All right, agenda sitting?
Vote, please.
Oh, vote to defer?
Table.
To table?
Oh, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, everybody agrees, no discussion? All right, we'll table it.
That's an extraordinary motion, she needs to roll call.
Oh.
Maybe roll call.
Why is it extraordinary?
Because it's tabled, it's not the normal flow.
It's after 9:00.
It's not the normal flow of the vote, the normal flow of the vote would be to discuss and go on.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay. Roll call real quick, Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McClung?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Of course, here.
All right, anybody have anything for the agenda next time? Anybody, city council comments?
I've commented enough tonight.
You've done well. Anyone else?
No one.
Okay. I've got a few, I've got a couple of things. First of all, let me introduce, Nick has been sitting over here patiently. He is, Nick, come on, stand up and get up here in front of the, welcome to the fire and brimstone of the city council.
Thank you.
He is the new interim-
It's not normally like this.
New interim Fire Chief. As Randy mentioned, tomorrow, what is today, Monday, tomorrow will be his last day. Nick and I met and talked about the issues that we have with the Fire Department, the pros and cons. But Nick has been around 18 years as captain, assistant chief with Eureka, and 23 years as paramedic. And so, you know, he's, he's seen both sides with volunteers and paid staff members. So, we're really excited to have Nick step in and help us out on an interim basis, because we're on a hiring freeze and spending freeze. He's stepping into this issue right now, too, as an interim basis, until we see what else can go into that. But thank you very much, Nick. I mean, do you have a few comments?
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. You want to say a few words?
I, I started on the Fire Department when Terry was a captain on the Fire Department, so that gives anybody an indicator of how long we've been here, so. I've seen all kinds of transitions of this department, and I've seen the budget grow, and I've seen the budget shrink. And there are things we can do to keep this service up and running, no problems, so I look forward to taking the helm for a while, if not permanently, so. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, it was a character.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, see you tomorrow. All right, yeah.
It was scary.
I've got two things. One is because of the tragedy that's happened down in Orlando, Florida, that hit all of us, I want to extend our support to the city of Orlando, and especially the families and loved ones that lost their lives, but also to the, the police and the paramedics that came out. I mean, it was a whole sad and tragic things that happened down there, and the whole country is mourning over what's going on down there. We had a memorial service yesterday evening down at the Basin Park, showing the support of our city and the solidarity that we have, and recognizing that we hope that, you know, that the peace will prevail on the face of all this senseless crime, and we don't give in to the hate and hatred that goes on. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we had a break during our city council meeting, and it was, we were informed that Joyce Zeller, who wasn't here, passed away today. And so certainly our deepest sympathy goes out to her relatives and everybody. She will be missed, not only at the table, where she served many years, but also within the community, and as a businessperson and an author. It's a sad, all the way around in our cities when these happen, especially with notification of, during our meeting, when we expect somebody to be here, and we find out that she's passed away. But, on another note, we have a light week as far as announcements going with upcoming events. For all those people who were around when Terry was a captain in the Fire Department, Gordon Lightfoot is going to be playing at the auditorium, 8:00 PM, on June the 23rd. And that's going to be a great concert. In fact, it's not sold out, but, but a lot of the tickets have been sold, and it's going to be a good crowd. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, please call in and sit, because he's going to put on a great, great performance. And then that Saturday, the Zion Car Parade will start, and this will be held at 8:00 PM Saturday, starting at, at the library and going down Springfield Street. And that's all I have right now.
Okay.
All right, thank you all very much.